At thirty.
Yes, sir.
Ready?
Go on, just a minute.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Elick.
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Here.
Ms. Karstoffen.
Here.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
And Mrs. Segwin.
Here.
Okay, would everybody please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, and welcome to the September 21st, 2022 Larry Board of Education meeting. I'd like to introduce our group up here. To my right is Board Member and Vice President Mike Gebhardt. To his right is Board Member Elaine Segwin. I'm Greg Elick. To my left is Board Member Annie Karstoffen. To her left is Board Member Len Hauser. To his left is our Superintendent Anne Slush. And way down in the end there is our Treasurer, Joy Klickinger. Okay, tonight we have a very exciting presentation. We're going to talk a little bit about the new school grades here. So I believe Natalie, you're going to lead us in this?
Yes.
Yep, go for it. Yeah, go for it.
So I don't know that I would say this is exciting, but thank you for that.
The handheld.
Oh, sure.
Okay, so tonight I'm going to explain, a new report card came out for our school district, for all the districts in the state of Ohio, and it's changed a little bit this year. So I'm just going to take a few moments to kind of go over the changes that have occurred in the results for our district. So the first slide is just kind of an overview, but the big change really is we used to receive grades, A, B, C, D, and F on our report card, and now they've switched it to stars. So you can equate stars to grades, but the same components that we had before, there are six different components in the report card. The first one is achievement where we received two stars. The second one is our progress component, and we received four. The gap closing is three. And our graduation rate, we received two stars. Early literacy was one star. And our college career workforce is not reported just yet. So I'm going to go over briefly each of those components, just to kind of explain how we receive those stars and what makes up the actual score. So achievement is where we received two stars. So for Leary City Schools as a whole, our performance, our achievement rating was a 60.8%. So what that means is we received two scores. You can see 60% falls within between this 50th and 70th percentile. We receive points based on the overall Ohio State Assessment scores. So it's one test on one given day for students in certain subjects beginning in grade three. And you'll see, I purposely included this chart here because I think it gives a little bit of a story. So these stars are no longer grades, but they don't tell us a whole lot about our district. And there's a lot more to our district, there's a story to our district and our students beyond this 60.8. So really what that means, if you were given a test, essentially if we took all the student scores, roughly we averaged a 60% on that test. But something that's important for us to take a look at is this trend data. So this last bar graph is where we have a 65.2, which is the actual points we received that equate to that 60.8%. But you can see over the course of 2018 and 2019, we were performing around a 74 percentile, or we were receiving 74 points. And then where we take this dip is in 2020 and 2021, which is when COVID hit. And so we had students that didn't come to school, we had students that didn't take the test. So that natural dip makes sense. But the good news is we're on the rise. And so you're seeing that score go up. So that, although we see two stars and we might question that, I guess it's important for us to look at that data over the course of several years and see that we're on the rise again, and that's a good thing. We can also take a look, you can find this on Ohio's Department of Education website, and we can look at this information a little bit more in depth. And tonight I'll just do an overview unless you have questions. But what we can do is take a look at these scores by content area, which is what we do in the school system. So we look at our English Language Arts scores, our math scores, Science and Social Studies to see patterns and where we want to take focus when we're looking at our instructional practices. But on their website, you can see by grade level what makes up that 60th percentile. And that goes all the way through high school, where we have algebra, geometry, English Language Arts, and such. Okay, so then the next component was progress, and we received four scars, it's four stars. So progress, and just to kind of put it simply, is made up of our value-added scores. So it takes a look at our data over the course of three years, and it predicts how well our students are going to perform. We received four stars in this category because our students performed better than they were expected to. So there's a formula, a calculation, that they look at our historical data and determine how they think our students will perform. And our students performed much better than they were expected. Again, this is over a course of three years. So I wanted to show this image as well. So this is a little bit different than our grades. Like, the grades changed to stars. When we used to look at our value-added reports, we would see colors like green was really good and red was really bad. They've changed this. Navy is really good, and there's a scale down here. Red is still not so good. But the navy is showing that we've exceeded the expected score. So I guess I wanted to point that out too, that we should be proud, you know, for what this data is showing. And, you know, when we talk as a district and administrative team and with our staff, again, it's one piece of data. But what this tells us is our kids are making growth, and in some cases, they're making more than a year's growth to close that gap. So that's what this progress is showing. And the navy is all areas where we went above expected growth. Okay, the next component is gap closing. And within the gap closing, we received 32.2%. So that's where we receive our three stars. The contributing factors that come up with our gap closing is within six different areas. So gifted, our students that are identified as gifted, and how we identify them and how they perform makes up part of that number. Our absenteeism, our English Language learners and their progress. And then, of course, math and ELA, achievement and growth, and our graduation rate. And I will quickly break this down. So the achievement piece, if you can see on here, these red dots, that's the expected score that the state wants us to shoot for. So for instance, in math, and this right side here is math, the red dot here shows the expected or the goal that we should be reaching is 77% of our students are passing. So the green is white non-Hispanic students, and these are broken down in subgroups. So you can look at the different subgroups. There's a target score and whether or not we meet those targets. So these are broken up by subgroups and then how they're performing. That's one component, one of the six. Then we look at the growth. So again, it's not a flat, I received a 60% on my test. It's how did I perform last year versus how I performed this year? So how much growth did I make? So that's what this piece here is, broken down by subgroups. And then we look at graduation, English Language learners, and then our absenteeism, which is a big focus of our district this year and has been, and then our gifted. And I guess I wanted to explain the gifted piece, this is one that I really have a hard time with, because we receive, you have, there's three different categories within gifted. So there's value-added, our performance index, and then identification and service. You have to meet all three areas to get the overall met or the five stars. So within this value-added piece, we received five stars. So what that means is, that's really good, but what that means is that our gifted students performed and grew more than a year's growth. They outperformed what they were expected to perform on their OSTs. So we got a five star, so we got this met. Then the performance index is overall, we could break this down a little bit more, but we were very close at a 108. I think it's like 110 to get to the performance index, meaning our performance overall, like in our other category, to get the met. But this last one is what really gets me. So you have to identify a certain number of students in gifted and service them. So we service 96% of our gifted students, meaning we identify that they're gifted based on assessments, and we assess them in second grade and in fifth grade, all students. And then throughout their career in the district, we identify students either based on referral, request, or a certain assessments that we give. And because we don't identify more students, that's why we didn't meet this. So not that they didn't perform or grow like they should have, we just don't have enough students that are identified as gifted. So that's why we didn't meet this score, which then essentially brings down our overall rating. So it's like you have to make up students to identify them gifted that we don't have, which it's one of my pet peeves, I guess, with this system. Okay, so that's gap closing, three stars. Then we look at graduation rate. This one's really simple. So they take a look at the percent of students that graduate in four years and the percent of our students that graduate in five. They take those two percents, combine them and divide, and we have 87.8%, which is two stars, which is similar to previous years for us. Early literacy, one star. So this is one that takes a look at students in kindergarten through grades three. And if one of the components is how many students are identified on track, meaning are they on track to be reading at a proficient level in third grade? Or are they identified as off-track, meaning they're reading below grade level? Percent of students that are scoring proficient, and then the number of third graders that we're promoting based on those proficiency scores. So when we break this down a little bit further, what happens is, so we got this 20.8%. And so you'll see this red bar over here is showing the number of students that were off-track, meaning they maybe didn't go to preschool and they came to us off-track. We identify those students in the fall. So that when they come to us, we identify based on an assessment if they're on or off-track to be reading in third grade. And that happens every year, K through three. And the blue shows how many students came, they were off, like they came off being off-track, so they're back on track. And so our goal is to make obviously this blue bar larger by getting more of those students that start off-track, not on-track, not on-grade level for reading, and get them on-track so that they're on-track. So we have to catch them up to their grade level and exceed. And then when you look over here, this is talking about how many third graders met the third grade reading guarantee requirements for fourth grade, so 98.5% of our students. And what that means is they either passed the state assessment, and in our case, we give a MAP, something called NWA MAP assessments. That can also count as allowing them to be promoted to fourth grade, et cetera. And then this one is how many third graders scored that proficient rate. All of that is what makes up our early literacy grade. So I would say our goal, and it's always a goal of ours, is to get more students to come off that off-track grouping and get them back on-track, which we are working on, of course, and you all thankfully approved a purchase of ours in the spring for our Tier One instruction at ELA, that I think that will also contribute and help to the phenomenal teaching that's happening in our classrooms. Okay, almost done. Then our last category is not ready yet. So this one is about call, it's basically what happens with our students that are, after they've graduated. Are we preparing them for the future? So this rating will show for the first time in 2025, but it will be data from the class of 2024. So we don't have it, they won't rate on this just yet. This will be to come. But right now they're collecting data on students to provide this component score in the future. Okay? I could talk a lot more about that, but I'm not, I say in seven minutes. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question here. So it seems like a lot of just the grading portion, we've done very well. But it's the tracking or whatever you call it, you know, getting the kids up. And is that a common problem with urban school districts?
Yes, I would say so, yes. So part of, one of the pieces of that is, so we identify those students, like I said, in kindergarten, we have to give them assessment within the first 30 days of school. And actually, their kindergarten-ready assessment, we have to give within the first 20 days of school this year. And so we're identifying who's off-track the first month of school. So we haven't had the students, and some of those students have not gone to preschool, haven't been with us at all. Even the students that are in first and second and third grade, they've been off for the summer. I would say more than ever with COVID and how things have changed, their instructional time has been limited over the last couple of years. So I, yes, it's definitely a challenge for all schools, but I would say urban schools more than others.
Other questions or comments?
I would like a quick analysis from our superintendent on her thoughts on these grades here, or stars.
Sure, sure. You know, one of my colleagues calls it the new Yelp system. But, you know, I think it's a step in the right direction, I really do, as far as how they came up with the ratings and everything. But unfortunately, they're still using it as ranking, and that is a true problem. You know, I don't know if any of you saw on Cleveland.com, you know, the rankings. But, you know, when I look at some of this, for instance, the early literacy, which Natalie, you know, talked about the experience and opportunities of a lot of our students before they even come to us. But you also have to think about 18 months that some of our students, the first time they came to school, was second grade. And that's no fault of anyone's, other than the fact that, you know, we had a worldwide pandemic. But I think what we have to remember, and I've told you over the last, gosh, 15 to 18 years I've been talking to you about this, the value-added is probably the most important of all of them to say, hey, when that student is in third grade, when they moved to fourth grade, did they make a year and a year? And that's important. Did we pull them from the beginning of third grade to the end of third grade, beginning of fourth? And, you know, talking about the kiddos that come in the first couple of weeks of school where some of them are still having a hard time just getting away from mom, and we're saying, sit down, take this test, you know, is that a real indication of where they're at? I like to think of the whole child, what can they do other than the test? And I think that's a much better indication of where we're at. I will say, you know, and I want to say, what a wonderful job, as Natalie said, that our entire staff does, working with the students. And to have the growth scores we had during this most difficult time is phenomenal. But I want everyone to remember that this is just one of those puzzle pieces and one snapshot in a picture of a child's educational journey. And we, you know, Natalie's team is putting a lot of new things in place. We have a new literacy program going in place, and we're constantly working together to do what we think is best for our students. So step in the right direction. I still don't like what they're doing with it. And some of the calculations, I'm not really sure. You'd have to be an astrophysicist or something to figure them out. But we're going to look at each child individually and work with them on that level.
Okay, well, keep up the good work, and we're a very fortunate group of educators that we have here and the cabinet and the admin and everybody. So it's exciting news, and we're looking forward to increasing wherever we can. Any other comments by any board member, questions?
I thought we didn't, did they have a standardized test during the COVID year?
One year we did not, but two years.
For the other year, okay. So for 20, they did not?
Yeah, first year, then the last.
Yeah, because they sent us home, right.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, great, thanks Natalie. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Thank you to all the staff and everybody else that's worked so hard on this. Okay, let's move along on the agenda. We have visitor comments. Nobody signed up in advance for 15 minutes, but we do have a couple of people that are here to speak for five minutes. And the first person we have is Matt Swab, I believe it's Swab, is that how you pronounce it? And Matt, for the record, even though you wrote it here, and I think everybody knows, but you wanted to state it anyway, is what your address is?
It's on here. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Matt Swab, 503 West Avenue.
I can hear you, but I'm not sure, is it on?
It's on.
Okay, Matt, these are your five minutes.
All right, so just to let you know where 503 West Avenue is, it's right at High School parking lot on West Avenue. And I've been here before, last year, and a few new people here. And I wanted to discuss the marching band practice. So approximately about 2018, 19, they started practicing in the West Avenue parking lot. It was due to the stadium project. I think it was only to practice at the stadium or elsewhere, I don't know where they practiced before. They've been practicing in there for four, four-plus years now, and it's a residential neighborhood. It's extremely, extremely loud and disturbing to the neighborhood. And I'm here representing myself, neighbors, and I want to give you a petition that we passed around. Went around a couple hours today and talked to some of our neighbors. And so I'm representing a good portion of the neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood, that's a very loud marching band. That sound carries down. I mean, in my house, it's ridiculous. I do have a recording I want to play for you before I'm done here. Very loud, echoes behind houses, echoes across the streets. It's very, there's a lot of hard surfaces around there. And the stadium project finally got done, they did not move back to the stadium. And now we've been told by Mr. Brown, the principal, that the reason that they're having that practice there is a matter of convenience. The kids can just walk out of the school and they're at their practice room. Well, it's not a convenience for the neighborhood, it's at our expense. I work all day, I come home in the evening, I have to listen to an hour or two of marching band practice outside my house, staying with the other neighbors, they have to listen to this stuff. It's too much. One thing is your good neighbor policy. So you have your handbook, I had, I'll read the first bit of it. I don't know if every one of you have read this, High School Handbook. Is the intent of the Leary City School to have a positive and good relations with our neighbors surrounding or near the building? I don't know how the marching band practice fits into that statement right there, but it certainly doesn't, to me. If it was in your neighborhood, outside of your house, would you allow it? No, I don't think so. This is a quality of life issue, and we're asking you to move it to the stadium. Move it inside the building. You've got a gigantic gymnasium there. Move it inside the building. You've got a humongous property here. I mean, this is a gigantic property. Move it here, you do the band camp here. So I'm asking, the only thing we have left now is the empathy of the school leadership. And as you guys up here, sorry, I mean, the guy, all of you up here, I would challenge any of the leadership to allow this practice at your house and see how you feel about this. And I'd like to play, this is recorded inside my house, with the windows open, but inside my house. We can't watch TV, we have to close our windows, blinds closed, curtains closed, run our air conditioner, even if it's not even hot in the house, we have to run our air conditioner, drown that out, earmuffs. It's too much. We're asking that you guys put us on to it. I've talked to, emailed about this for four years now, we're tired of it.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, next we...
I got a copy for everybody, if you'd like to pass it out.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, next we have Brad Armstrong. Brad, would you please?
I thought that was signed in my bed.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, thank you, Brad. Okay, we'll pass this down to the Treasurer. Okay, 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 great. So that's it for the speakers for today. We'll move along on the agenda to the minutes. The minutes have been posted for the September 7th, 2022 meeting. Hopefully everyone's had a time to look those over, and now I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
I have a motion by Board Member Karstoffen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Board Member Segwin. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen? Aye. Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Madam Treasurer, do you have action items for us this evening?
Yes, I do. Just a couple action items. The first is to present the August 2022 financials. And then the second item is to accept the donations as they're listed. We have some from Otto Keneaton, and it's $200 for supplies. We have quite a few supply ones. Galvin Therapy Center is another donation of supplies. Moose Lodge, $300 for school supplies. Staples, supply kits valued at $2,160. Community of Faith Church, school supplies valued at $850. And then we also have a rather large donation from the Stocker Foundation. It's the first of three installments of $87,500 to be used towards Project Lead the Way to support the district's STEAM education.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Treasurer action item?
So move.
A motion by Board Member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Hauser. Questions, comments? I do have a question. Can you give us a little bit more information on the Stocker?
Sure. As you remember, we just finished up a three-year where they finished off the two preschool teachers. They had been supporting them for over 10 years, and they...
Is that what Lead the Way project is?
No, that, so they transitioned into STEAM three years ago, and that grant was finished. So I met with them again, with Kathy Gep, who kind of does our STEAM initiatives, and they agreed to give us another 200 and some thousand to continue our work with Project Lead the Way, which is a curriculum that we use in our STEAM education courses.
Great, okay. Other questions?
Yeah, just to, where do these donations, I mean, how do these people, do they just come up and say, here, we're going to donate this?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Some of them have connections within the schools, you know, a relative works there. Some of them are, like, some of the faith-based are churches within that neighborhood. But we have a lot of very giving people in this community.
Very fortunate. Okay, other questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Madam Treasurer, you have Treasury other items for us this evening?
Yes, I do. I have two items. One is to approve the permanent appropriations for fiscal year '23. And the other one is the transfer of money to the Building Fund 004. Just a comment on each of them. The permanent appropriations are appropriations that we have to tag as permanent. The permanent appropriations are appropriations that we have to tag as permanent, but they are able to be changed throughout the entire year. So you'll probably see revisions to that throughout the year. And the transfer of funds, that is to finish the two renovations of Crest, the one of Crestwood and Westwood, which gave us additional eight classrooms for the overcrowding that we had, and it also put preschool and kindergarten at Crestwood.
And that's all coming from the general fund?
That is, except that portion of it is. The rest of it is out of ESER funds.
ESER funds. Okay. Is that, so is that the total amount then from the general fund that we're using for the, these two buildings? That's going to be our general fund hit?
Yes.
And I'm assuming we'll hear more about that when we talk in another month or so about the whole entire building construction?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Great. Do I, so where are we at on this? Do we need a motion or just a roll, roll call?
Motion.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Board Member Karstafen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Gebhardt. Any other questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seiguan?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Madam Treasurer, any items from the OFCC, OSFC this evening? Okay, Madam Superintendent, you have action items for us this evening?
I certainly do. First of all, to approve the, to declare the impracticality, I was hoping I could say that word, of providing transportation for the following students. These are students that it's just impractical, and their parents are going to transport. To approve the agreement with parents for transportation of students as listed below. And that is it.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's action items?
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Hauser, or do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Seiguan. Any questions or comments?
Yes. Yes. Oh, go, go ahead.
When we're approving the impracticality, are we still liable for the funds for them to transport, or no?
So we pay them, I believe it's $250?
Yes.
Yes, per student to transport, and then it's, it's their responsibility.
And that's for the year?
For the year, yeah.
Oh, for the year?
Yeah.
It's the one-time $250?
Per student?
Per student.
Per student.
So we didn't do that for the other person going to the open door? We're transporting them?
I'm not sure which student you're talking about, but there's...
That's an agreement. So there is a student that goes to Firelands after because of a daycare situation, and there's an agreement between the two districts.
It's an Alaria resident that goes to the school. Firelands is willing to transport them at the parent's request. You have to give Firelands permission.
Right.
So we have to transport them to open door?
We don't give them to them.
Oh.
Fireland, or the other school district.
Oh, I thought we were transporting to open door, then they were going from there. Okay.
Now, this is a sign, the parent has requested that Firelands be allowed to...
Yeah, okay.
...transport them, and this is your giving them permission.
Great. Any questions? Any other? Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seiguan?
Aye.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Madam Superintendent, it looks like you've been busy with personnel, huh?
Yes, still. First of all, to approve the resignation of the following certified staff, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff. We're up to 42 subs. We, as you can see, hired a few last-minute hires as needed due to increased enrollment. To approve the supplemental contracts of the following district certified and non-district employees. Also, to approve the appointment of the following classified staff. As you'll see, a lot of our SRO workers, and then some other switches between classified positions. And that concludes my personnel action items.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's action items?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Board Member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Support.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Second. All right, we got a second support here. Any questions or comments?
Just the SROs, it seems like there's a lot on here. Is this without additional monies that we received?
No, what, what is going, some of these are the athletic coverages.
Okay.
But at our middle schools, Northwood, middle, or campuses, Northwood and Eastern Heights, it's a different person every day. So for instance, let's say Patrolman Weber might be every Monday.
Okay.
So they, they share because it's done on their days off from the police station, so...
All the police are in here. I mean, we give them a contract, all of them, don't we?
We have everyone who would like to be part of it fill out a contract. That way, if they need to sub or anything. And then we have some that work the athletic events.
I apologize because it's been a few months, but I know we did get some additional funding, correct, for security?
We did get some safety funding. We use Title IV funds of safety for some of our SRO. We use some general fund dollars. And then a lot of the safety money that we received was used to buy, or to purchase those locks on the door and that. So it's grant money, and a lot of times, the grant money is very specific as to what you can purchase, and a lot of times, it's not people. So we tend to use the entitlement and general fund for the people. Athletics is paid through the athletic budgets and general fund. So it depends, there's several different funding sources.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of good questions about the safety. And you know, probably down the road, we have a few other things we're obviously going to announce, but it would be nice if we get an update on the security measures of the new schools and the SROs, and kind of the game plan on...
That is actually the topic for, you know, how we're having department updates. That is one of the months, or the meetings.
Good. All right. Super, any other questions or comments? Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seiguan?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Madam Superintendent, do you have a superintendent's report for us this evening?
I do. It was an extremely busy weekend. Went to the football game in Avon. They were very gracious hosts, and we held tough for three quarters. We really did, and then the bottom kind of fell out, but the kids fought hard. We had, I saw a great volleyball tournament on Saturday morning. The Apple Fest went all weekend. They sold 6,000 cookies. I do have to say thank you to staff and administrators that worked the Little Red House. We had great apple art contestant winners, which is, you know, great art teachers in the district. They were all there. At night, we were at the parade of bands. We had seven visiting schools. It was packed. I don't think there was a seat in the house. So that was exciting. This coming weekend, we have homecoming. Please remember, with the construction that's happening out at the stadium, to think about taking the shuttle from the high school, starting at 5:30. It's a real quick trip. They'll get you back and forth as needed, and we're really excited. The homecoming dance then is on Saturday. So really exciting times, lots to do, lots of great activities to go watch.
Okay. Great. Okay, Board of Education. First item I'd like to do is, I discussed with everybody our October 19th board meeting. We'd like to move it to October 26. We have a lot of big things planned here with our communications department and Mr. Rigda to go over wrapping up the finances for the construction in the new schools. So I believe I should, should I get a motion on that to move the board meeting? So I'd like to get a motion to approve moving the October 19th meeting one week later to October 26. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Karstafen. Do I have a second?
Support.
Support. There you go.
Okay, and supportive second from Mr. Gebhardt.
I knew you were going to say that.
Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seiguan?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, Board of Education business. I have a couple items here. First of all, we have our visitors from the neighborhood that spoke about the band, and I would like to say one thing, that I've heard nothing but rave comments and support about Principal Brown has gone above and beyond dealing with the neighborhood. I've heard nothing but positive things on how professional and polite you've been, and what a great leadership you've shown during this time. It's never easy when you have neighbors that aren't happy, and I've heard nothing but rave reviews about what you've done. So way to carry yourself and also the image of Alaria schools. That is greatly appreciated. Also, too, we have, Annie Karstafen would like to talk a little bit about, what was your item here?
JVS.
JVS.
Lorain County JVS.
We might be moving another meeting, so go ahead.
Just wanted to say that there are several board meetings at the Lorain County JVS that are moving, say, one of their meetings over to the JVS building, and, you know, at some point. And I just wanted to get us on that schedule so that at some point, we would be able to take our board meeting over to JVS. Just one meeting, so that maybe some of you that have not been there, maybe would get a chance to see the building as well, you know?
Okay.
Get a feel for what's going on over there as well.
And of course, their culinary department will make the snacks.
Oh, yeah.
Are there snacks at the JVS? Wow, I was going to say, okay.
Maybe.
Put in a good word, Annie.
We would love that.
Well, we will definitely look into scheduling that, although we do have a number of presentations planned with the different departments, but we'll definitely look into that. That sounds like a wonderful idea.
Yes.
Okay, for the good of the cause, other items here? Anyone?
No.
I was just going to give kudos to the band as well. I was a chaperone on the Kicking with Kenny, and I was thinking, well, jeez, I haven't been a chaperone since Crestwood, so now these are basically adult kids. They were so well behaved, because they got two hours just to roam the Rock and Roll